Welcome, everyone. Would everyone please stand and we'll do the pledge. Ken, would you lead us?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We have member Mike Tonellio joining us from South Carolina tonight. So he'll be tuning in. He's particularly interested in the presentation. And so with that, why don't we go to item 1.02, approving the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, we're good. Okay, motion second. Everyone in favor say aye. Thank you.
I move we approve the minutes of the August 2nd legislative board meeting.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll go right to item 2.01, building project update. Cindy, would you like to introduce our guests?
Absolutely. So we do have Andy from Day Automation to talk about the EPC. Gary Hoffman and Charlie are from Campus Ted. And I'm so sorry, I forgot your name. Becky, those are from SEI. And what we're going to do tonight is talk about where we are in the budget process for the project and those steps, as well as look at some pictures and products as we move forward with the designing phase and still working towards that goal of submitting the end of August for our SED plans. So Gary, did you want to just start?
Sure. So, good evening. I'm Gary Hoffman from Campus. I'm here to talk about our estimate right now. So we, if you recall, during this process, the architect is working on documents to submit SED for approval by the state. They have to issue the bill of commitment. So they have to review the documents largely for code compliance. So as the architect is developing those documents, we develop three phases typically. It's schematic design, design development, and construction development drawings. Construction development drawings are the ones that go to the state for further review. I reported back a few months ago on the schematic design estimate at that time, and we were just, I believe we were just under budget at that point as well. And we are reporting tonight on our design development. We are still, though razor thin, we are under budget by about $72,000. That's good news. I'm going to give out copies and then just take a minute to walk through it. Yes. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Can do so. You want? Yeah, yeah, we can. So I think I got plenty. Thank you. I'm sorry? I'll stand next to that thing. So we are at the design development. So we're essentially midpoint in the development of the documents to be submitted to SED. As Cindy just said, I believe SEI is on track to submit this month. Actually, good news is, in another district today talking about their project, the architect reported that review times have decreased quite a bit. So I guess working from home has been productive for the state. So we're looking at if something goes in, projection right now, if you go in end of September probably, or end of August, probably coming out close to December-ish. That's subject to change on a weekly basis with the state, but that's what we're looking at. Which puts us in an awesome time to bid at January, February timeline. That's what we strive for as we went through this entire process. That's the time to hit. So, and the goal would be to start construction this coming spring '22. So about three pages in, there's just a really brief summary, and that puts us at $72,000 under budget right now. We are going to be talking as we continue on, having a conversation about alternates. And it is our sincere belief that we need to put, when this project goes on the street to bid, we need alternates. And alternates are items that we're going to come to you with and present and say, these are possibility items that may not make it in the project, but is to protect the budget. In the event that we open bids and until we're budget, we'll have alternates built in. So essentially, let's just say it's $12 million of construction. We're going to recommend at least eight to 10% in a safety valve, so that if we are over budget on opening day, we can, if we're over, if, let me put this way, if we want 12 million, I'm suggesting we put 11 million-ish on the street, but have alternates to add back in if we're favorable results. If it's a good bid day, we can add alternates back in, if that makes sense. But it's a bad day when you can't award bids because we're over budget. So we have to protect the budget, and it's our job to come to and recommend that we do so. Questions? It's a safety valve. We just have to do it. Because if we don't and we're over budget, we can't award contracts, and then it delays everything. And we've got to hit the FCR date that the district has to accomplish in '23. So it's time tests have proven.
I've heard a little bit about, from Cindy, about possibly we need to change the finishes and maybe not as expensive finishes, but my question is, do you anticipate any of the major items of this having to be pulled?
Um, yeah, like, probably the biggest one is industrial arts. It's proving to be expensive, and I'm not sure we can accomplish it within the confines of the budget. We live in very challenging times when it comes to pricing. Not only a shortfall of labor in the market which drives prices, but material shortages and supply chain shortages. We're living at everyday distortion, and it's just driving prices. What costs today? Huh? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm just saying, if something costs $20 today, it was $10 a year ago. You know, and it's all over. It's not consistent. It's hard to nail this down. One day it's paint, and the next day it's steel. It's just crazy.
So you said that industrial art speaks. That's not the STEM?
No, no, no. It's the shop area. That was the shop area.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, the biggest concern is certainly the equation we've been using. My biggest concern is availability of materials. And is there, do we have built into the schedule delays in materials, delays in critical capacity delays?
To the best of our ability, yes. Bar Joyce is a big one I have right now. About three, four months ago, Bar Joyce went to a 12-month short delay. So if you order Bar Joyce today, it's a year from now before you see them. Unprecedented, unprecedented. So we're hoping, so by the time this goes out to bid, we're pushing a year beyond when that happens. So I'm hoping that that starts to alleviate. So we're hoping, we're crossing our fingers, seeing some early indicators that materials are going to, delivery is going to get better, not worse, down the road. But it's still hard to predict. So the best of really, yes, we're scheduling this, but I'm kind of up against a rock and a hard place in that really want to start in the spring so that work can be done in time to file cost reports by December of '23.
Is there any way to get in there and queue without committing this week?
I'm not sure of the question.
He's asking if there was any way to, you know, start looking at ordering now before submission.
Oh, we cannot without SED approval.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to have SED's approval and have them issue billing for that before we can do that. Otherwise, yes, I would love to.
So if you got SED approval in December?
We go right out to bid.
Even before we bid, we might even get a queue? Do there are supply chains?
Well, that's difficult without contracts in place. It's the contractors who are going to order the materials. So until we award contracts, it's the middles issued by the contractors. It's difficult to do that. There's a few things maybe we can, the district had to direct by, but there's not a lot out there. Everything's direct through a contract.
Well, that's really SED's issue.
We explore every option, absolutely. We really do.
Then maybe a factor in determining who we select is wrong.
Yeah, unfortunately, in New York State, qualified a little bit gets the job.
So am I moved in or moved to the state?
Yes. Just a different way of saying it. I don't want to take all the time tonight because SEI has to follow me, and so does Day. If you have any other questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'm more than willing to come back after you look at this, next board meeting, if you want me to come back and answer any questions, I'm certainly willing to do that as well.
You're basing your estimates off of SEI's designs for the moment?
Correct. Yes, we estimate what's on the drawings. And they give us this set of drawings that they have prepared to date. And we run the estimate, that's there. Yes. And then we reconcile. We do the estimate, we sit down with the design team, we reconcile what we see, have that conversation, do we understand this, not understand it? We get on the safe page, and then we have the final product.
So if there's areas that you see cost saving measures, you have to mend design pieces, you could then recommend that?
Yes.
And the finishes being one, obviously.
And we do that.
The functionality for students and staff, that's essential, that we don't lose sort of that piece of it versus aesthetics and whatnot, so.
And we do have those conversations.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
And Ted and Becky came from SEI to just give an update on where we were in the design, but also then to show some examples of those samples that we're talking about for finishes, the product. As we move further into that design base, that's where we really will bring that building planning task force back together to look at colors and those who are intricate design materials. So, and Becky.
Cindy, with regard to the building task force, please, have they been notified?
So we emailed everyone that was on the building planning task force that this was going to be an update at the board meeting. And then we also told them to look for an invite in September where they would be invited back to have conversations about the finishes. So yes, they have been notified. You're welcome. Cafeteria, wait.
I can wait for a minute.
Okay.
I'll do whatever I can. Hello, thanks everybody again for having us out. We appreciate the time, and it's a great moment in the process for us to update everybody on where we are. As Gary mentioned, we went through quite a lengthy process to get to this point. Basically, what he's talking about with the estimate is, we got through that second phase, design development phase, which, I don't know, we had taken the drawings from 50 to like 150 drawings. And so we're way further into the process, and the fact that we're on a little bit under budget, I think is very good right now. And we'll just continue to work on that as we continue to develop the drawings. We'll go back, they'll check it at the SED phase. And then while it's at SED, even though it could be quick this time, you know, normally it goes to SED in Albany, and it might be down there for two, three, four months. If we get it back in a month, that's good, but we're just going to have to kind of be careful, I guess, because we're going to have to get the estimate after it goes to SED and then make sure we're on track and everything like that. So if we get it in a month, we may have to actually ask you guys for another few weeks so that we can make sure that thing's ready to go. But in any case, we'll continue to work on the budget and, you know, getting this to the right scope for you guys. And the three main parts of the project are fully intact. I think the three main parts people think about, the turf field out on the Field of Dreams, and the gym addition with all the associated changes to the first and second floor, including the impacts we talked about, some cafeteria, and lobby space outside the auditorium, and downstairs with the various rooms we're developing for, you know, exercise rooms, fitness rooms, and so forth, and then the auditorium. So those three parts, we've been continuing to work on, developing quite a bit. So tonight, we just wanted to give you a little update. We are in the middle of what's the third phase of design and construction documents phase, which is really our job at that point, is we're creating the final documents for the contractors to bid off of. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from the district. We continue to have regular meetings with everybody, and we're just getting it ready to send in that package to Albany so we can get it online basically for approval. We have some concepts to show you, and we'll talk a little bit about materials as we go through each room. Actually, we'll go maybe in a little different order than the list right there. But essentially, at this point, I don't want you to feel like you're backed into a corner with any decisions or anything. I'm going to, we're going to show you the renderings, which are just concepts of where we are right now in the design. And what we're looking for is maybe a little feedback if you think we're headed like way in the wrong direction or something. That would be good to know. But in terms of some of the final fine tuning and material selections and color selections, we can definitely make that further into the fall, and then eventually, as we go to bid and get the project out on the street, final color selections will actually happen when we get contractors onboard. Because as Gary mentioned, it's an open bid process in New York State. So we can put down that you have to provide Sherwin-Williams XYZ color, but when they actually bid the project, they have the ability to make some value substitutions in there as long as it meets our specification. So the Sherwin-Williams XYZ might turn into the Pratt &amp; Lambert 123. But as long as it's comparable and the color's close, you know, we'll work with the contractors on that. So those types of things will be happening as we move into the approval phase and get it ready for bid. At this point, we have four renderings to show you, and I think we'll start with, we can start with the cafeteria, the first one. You can open that one up, and we'll talk about some of the finishes. So one of the things we're doing with the cafeteria is, we're really trying to work off what's in there existing. But as you know from the plans we showed you before, we're changing some of the edges of the cafeteria. The cafeteria's going to stay where it is, right next to the kitchen, but the cafeteria itself is going to change in terms of some of the finishes and also some of the ways that the circulation works. So right now, it's off of the lobby in front of the auditorium, which it will still be. But you'll have the ability to come into that auditorium lobby and actually go off towards the right and kind of in a curved hallway, it'll lead you back to the new gymnasium. So that's going to be a new entrance, a new circulation piece that you don't have right now, and that's affecting the outside wall that you see on the right side of the cafeteria. So what we're proposing is to work with some of the existing finishes that we have, build off of that, and create some new branding for the district, some logos. We've got some graphics on the wall. There'll be some glass areas that you see on the right that we'll be actually able to see from the cafeteria out into the hallway that leads to the gymnasium. The windows in the back are the existing windows. And then what we're proposing is a mix of materials for the ceiling. So we're opening up the ceiling. Right now, you've got a flat ceiling like this. We're proposing to take that down and create some hanging accent pieces there. There's a grid system, some different lighting, and then you see the round clouds. So this is a combination of visual interest and acoustics that we think will make the space a little bit more dynamic. And then we're showing a soffit on the left, which would be over the serving area. So this is kind of the concept of where we are right now. And Becky, if you want to talk about some of the finishes maybe in the space?
Yeah, I brought samples, I can pass them around, about vinyl tile floors and small tile floors. But the concept is, so the white area of the floor, we're, that's not the exact pattern that's regarding bracket representation. We're not impacting the floor there. So our thought is to leave, you know, it's probably two-thirds of the cafeterias were existing, and then add this blue arc swatch in where the walls and corridors changing so we're impacting the floor. So leave some of it, tie things together. As always happens in this world, colors are never available for very long. So, you know, your exact blue and your exact white will find something that works and coordinates. I brought just little pieces, this is vinyl, BCT, which is vinyl composition tile. And it's a 12-inch module, it's what's in, I think, most of your corridors, if they're not Tarazzo and some of the ramps are sheet products. But it's a very standard product for this type of space, and we'll bring in accent colors that tie in with the scheme. Opening up the volume really can help, I think, make the space feel a little bit more dynamic, more interesting. Also, across the way from the taller windows, there's a senior cafeteria space where they are dining, and their windows will be across from each other. So although the rooms are separate on either side of the new curves corridor, it'll sort of tie together as one space, but finishes and bowls will be related. So trying to open things up, bring some windows in and light, or at least a feeling of light into the lobby space, and we have another image of that. Just trying to work with what we have, but also just really enliven it, give it some fresh life without spending too much on the perimeter. The clouds are, I have a sample of blue, and I apologize, it's an ugly blue. They, you could get any custom Sherwin-Williams color or bench from Orkwood. But it's an acoustical ceiling tile, so that it's this same type of material, and it also has, is raw on the back. So the idea is that the sound, instead of in this environment, this plane is stopping the sound. In this, what we're proposing, the volume is higher. Those brown ribs look like wood, but they're not. They're also an absorptive material. And the clouds are absorptive on the bottom and the top, so that as sound is bouncing around, it can get controlled a little bit more. So every time you bounce it in a different direction or absorb it from a separate direction, it just gets quieter and quieter. The floor is very hard, walls are very hard, windows are obviously very hard. I think that'll both be visually interesting, but also help with some of the crews. So I'll pass some of these things around, chunks of vinyl tile that are, they are.
Are you confident that you can mesh the floor without a transition piece?
Yeah, they, vinyl tile is the same material, and when they remove and do construction, they'll grind down what they need to and patch up what they need to so that the top point will be flush. Yep. And the corridor finish and the floor tile in here are all the same material, just different colors. So it's going to be seamless from, you know, location to location. Joints will be put in if there is an actual construction joint where the building moves intentionally, which is, you know, built into designs. But as far as just tying into the field, yeah, they can get that.
Questions on the cafeteria? We've got three other spaces we can show. Why don't we do gym?
Studio or gym?
Metal pan, oh, no. Yeah, gym metal panel, that one, yeah. That's the inside. So this is the new gym. So we've been working on this quite a bit, too. This is looking towards the parking lot. So the concept right now is wood floor. So that's a typical gymnasium floor. I brought a sample right here. It's a multi-level thickness. You've got a, you've got, you know, this piece here is theoretically your concrete slab. You've got an acoustic barrier in here, a shock pad also for resiliency for the athletes. You also have an extra layer of plywood. There's a clip system inside which provides more resiliency for people running up and down the court. And then the finish is a regular maple floor, which you would see in most gymnasiums. So this is a pretty typical type of floor that we put in high school and middle school gyms. But it is, you know, it does have some thickness to it, so that's built into the plan. So from there, you know, we'll work with the district on whatever types of lines you want to put in there. That's something that can happen down the road a little bit. We have a little bit of time on that. Let's say they want to put in, you know, a main basketball court and two side courts or volleyball courts. We can overlay all those lines, and that eventually ends up becoming a drawing that we put into the set that goes to bid. And then it'll come back to you eventually when we get a contractor onboard, and they'll say, this is it. This is the final one for approval. And then Cindy will probably sign off, or whoever at the district will sign off and say yes, and then it's locked in, and that's going to be the paint colors that you get on the floor. You know, there could potentially be a logo in the middle. We'll probably work on that as well, Geneseo logo. We're showing the bleachers on the right side. We can do district colors with that. We're showing quite a bit of blue and white and just accent walls that we wanted to accentuate in the cross pattern. So that's a structural X pattern between the columns there, so we're accentuating that with the blue. Obviously, you can paint it white. We've got blue wall pads, so you'll have wall pads around the gym. And then we've got some windows at one end, and then also, we've done a, we're showing right now a blue and a white alternating for the structure at the top, which is really nice look to have. It'll be all LED lighting. And right now, one of the things we're researching as we continue, you know, this is just a point in time of the design development of the project. We're trying to look at different ways that we can knock down the light a little bit from the windows. So if there's, it is facing west, so if there's like a low sun on an afternoon, we can either do window films or possibly window treatments that are motorized that can come down and just block that out. But, so we continue to work on this space. We've got, you know, a logo on the wall, and there's still a lot of things we can do, but this is kind of where we are right now with it. And, yeah, I brought the floor and anything else in that space? It's pretty much paint. It's paint and wood floor.
Yeah. The bleachers are, the way we, we do work, the seat portion of the roof here is a plastic shell, and there's sort of like each person is like a component. So you, you know, in a huge, you know, athletic facility, you'll see that be letters or something where you're using pixels overseas. With this kind of a bank of them, it's not really enough to get that kind of view of, you know, spelling something. But we have also done where, you know, whether you like, but it gets a little crazy in this type of space. And that's what we have in the elements with the alternating crustaceans, alternating colors in the wall pads. We've got the accents we've got that just, you know, one position module, we've got the nice, you know, one gets damaged, they're all the same. So there are opportunities there that may be design tweaks, but we thought this was a, a relief and a work that needs to be approached.
The bleachers, are you proposing pull-out bleachers that pull back in or stationary that don't do that?
They're motorized.
So you can go back and?
Yeah, just to give them more space on the floor.
Yeah, that's what, looking at a bunch of other things.
So recently, the bleachers we've been specifying are the shell, like Becky was saying, so it's a hard plastic shell that can be colored. But you can also get like those railings at the aisles. You can get those. It's called an F rail, so it kind of looks like this, and it will fold right into the bleacher. So you don't even have to take those rails out. You just motorize it, not walk it back into the wall, and it will self-store inside the bleacher.
And design base component with the patent team, does that teachers, coaches, they can have say on different components that they may see as beneficial with them in that space?
And remember, that was part of the process. They, I mean, I don't know how many user groups you had with athletics, Ted, but there were multiple.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll go back to those meetings, and if they said, you know, we need X amount of backstops, or, you know, they used to do the climbing ropes, or whatever they need, you know, chin-up bars, we'll add those accessories in. The only thing we wouldn't do is equipment that's loose typically in the project. Stuff that's attached to the walls we would do, but if it's like a basketball, or let's say you wanted to roll out one of those hoops on wheels, that would be something that would probably be purchased separate, separate outside of the project.
I think I just want to add, specifically at this stage, like, the way the process goes, you know, starting in the group meetings and try the sky green, and then as each, you know, the way the design is kind of like trouble-y and great pictures, I guess now, and our with the investment, working back and forth with the user groups and the leaders, and that stuff is like incorporated and evaluated. So at the, you know, by the time we get to, we have the setting this into the state, this generally is meeting, you know, fighting the middle ground between the items of various teams, like in this one, athletics folks wanted to see. So it's not that, you know, go to the bid and then it'll get revisited. It's sort of, that's part of the porting in process to get to. But they could revisit it, we'd be like, why work? But they could revisit it with like live work. And, you know, when this middle comes in, for the company that's going to provide the leadership will pick the colors that they may not have, you know. So sort of bulk, but I didn't want to leave it like these, still going to revisit, you know, to the big picture of the design.
Which is great for none of this space, but the next space you're going to show us as well will be out there. So it's great to hear that, that'd be important. Thanks.
And I think the railings are important, because I keep hearing that with like the design at the college, with the seating and the ice rink. And like we had that with the auditorium. So the railings are like that. And is there any, is there anything as far as research? If you did different colors for the bleachers and what it's like when you're walking up and down?
The, the, not in like the gray, you know, it's gray from my perspective where the aisle are. Those are not colored. That's because the seat itself is the blue part.
Okay.
So like the framework is not, so when you walk up, yeah, and it could get, like if you did.
Because if you, we forgot to busy, yeah.
I think it doesn't even really work because the height is too small. When they're folded up, that's when you, you know, write G.
Yeah, you couldn't do a letter. It's too short.
There aren't enough pixels to do that and do anything. But yeah, it's something to be very much.
Like a really short I.
Yeah.
You couldn't do any letter that had, you know, a curve, like a G or something like that. It just wouldn't be enough space to do it. But, I mean, that being said, there are other little things you can do, like that blue cap right at the end of the aisle, for instance, can get a logo on it. So you might be able to do something right there where, where the aisle is, down by your feet. You know, there's little things like that we can do as we go forward. Sorry.
I was just curious what the, the seating capacity?
I think it was around 200, but I got to look that up.
Two, two fifty?
Two to 220, something like that, yeah. So it was meant for modified games. It's not the main gym, obviously, but it'll be, you'll be able to get nice sized crowds in there. So, yeah, that's kind of the current gymnasium design. Uh, let's do lobby. So I don't think you've seen this yet. So.
I think they did. I showed them this last week.
So this is the lobby concept. So we, we took a look at this, the auditorium lobby, and we felt like there could be some different uses for it maybe, or a different imagining of it. It's very strong right now, and it's part of the original architecture of the building. It has that strong concrete curve that's the outside of the auditorium. So we're not proposing to get rid of that. What we're proposing is, because we have this new aisle that's going to go back and corridor back to the gym, that we kind of accentuate the three main arteries that are going to be coming into that space. So you've got this one, this view here is from the main front entrance. If you wrap around the auditorium to the left, you're going towards the elementary wing. And then if, now if you wrap around to the right, you're going to go, be going between the cafeteria and the senior cafeteria right to the gymnasium. So that's going to draw you in that way. There's also out there some different materials, some different finishes on the floor that we're proposing to change. Right now, we've got the idea of a bench on the right side and a display case. That could change a little bit, but that's the current design. We've got district branding on the end. And one of the concepts, again, with the ceiling was, there's a lot of space above some of these ceilings in the building. And one thing we can do here is we can, again, remove the ceiling, give you some more height in that space. It's a large space, which gives you a little bit more relief, a little bit more drama. And then we can paint that out in black. And we provided these three large light fixtures, which are really meant to be gallery fixtures. So if you want to have an event in there, an art show, or bring things out on easels, those lights can all be changed and aimed towards the different things on the floor. So you could have really a sort of a reception type of feeling in the space with a, with a little bit of an exhibit type feel, depending on, on the event. Then we also had the idea of accentuating the doors into the auditorium a little bit, with the floor finishes, with the soffit. And then we've got some ideas to accentuate that wall with some lighting. But we're going to leave the concrete, pretty much. And then you've got the entrances into the cafeteria and some other accent lighting that we'll have going through there. So that's, that's the current concept. And we thought it was important to go to this level here, because this part of the building is going to feel new. It's going to feel special now with the auditorium getting updated, cafeteria getting updated, the new gymnasium, and all of that coming together in the reception space right here. We would hate to just leave this as is. So that's one of the things that we, you know, we worked into the project, and we'd like to see it survive, but, you know, again, it's somewhat budget dependent. But that's the current idea.
We were talking about it, definitely it's like a multifunction space, because, you know, very day-to-day school, it's traffic pattern.
Yeah.
But you vote there, and you have art shows there, and you might have, you know, I don't know, process will be streamlined, you know? But all different things could happen. And so you think depending on how you use the spot under the switch, the lights can be switched or dimmed a little differently, so that you can focus one area to focus another area, or before or after performance, or athletic, and then kind of a nice spot. And you talked about having some of the bench maybe be bench, some might be high, so it could function as a spot that something is displayed during one of the events, or having the vote that could be, you know, information put up there. So making that very usable and flexible, but very durable also. Everything we're talking about is getting the vinyl tile, certainly your brick and walls are durable. Any of the stuff that looks like what you're talking about being like that, so not actual wood, so that it would be tough and still, for day-to-day kid traffic and special events, you can tape up on and take stuff down. So it's kind of refreshing to get in and keep it, make it more dynamic and more usable. And I think we're both going to tend to be.
Well, it was, you know, one of the pieces of feedback early on, actually when Mr. Hayes was still here, from the Building Plan and Task Force, was they really wanted someone to come in and look at our district with a fresh set of eyes. And what I think SEI has done so well with our building and these designs is they've taken our existing features and, and really have built up those pieces that, I mean, we walked down that space now and it looks like a wasted space. It just doesn't look right. It looks like it's odd. And if you walk into this space, you know, all of that feeling goes away. We're making it functional. We're making it much more appealing. And just, you know, I think they really hit the mark on trying to bring our building up to speed and, you know, into a more modern look, but also being very fiscally minded. You know, a fifteen and a half million dollar project sounds a lot to us, but not with all the different areas that we're, we're touching and building upon. So I'm really happy with this design.
How much space are they taking out of the large cafeteria?
As far as like reducing the seating?
Yeah.
So there wasn't many. A pile even.
It's actually very similar.
And then we're adding.
Because we're taking a corner off of it to make the hallway back to the gym, but we're adding that into a section of corridor creating for the senior cafe. So I think when you add the two together, it's very close to what it was now.
I think we might even get more.
It might be a little larger, yeah, yeah. So the last one is the exterior gym. So this has changed a little bit. It's similar, I think, what you saw last time, but we've added a lot of detail. So it starts with the gym form, which has been similar to this for quite a while. I think we've shown you a few with these sort of buttresses. So the buttresses going down the middle, you see the four of them there, are actually columns behind there, but they're clad in a material that accentuates them and can be accented with special lighting. And they're really picking up on an element of the existing building that you have on the right between the windows of the cafeteria, which is a smaller concrete buttress. And those are just, they're just kind of supersized on the gym addition. And in, in addition to that, we still have all the glass down below, which is going to be the steam spaces. And we've been working with that design to continue to add additional program elements into it, as well as the ability for them. They've mentioned the ability to possibly go outside and do some things, because there's going to be a nice grounds area there. So they could actually do some things outside with either an outdoor classroom, or maybe some plantings and things like that. So there will be a direct indoor/outdoor connection on those lower levels. Behind the two people on the little plaza above the G is the concession stand. So that's going to be the entrance concession stand. You'll be, you'll be, the person walking across that crosswalk there could be theoretically coming up from the field. And they'll come up the stairs right there and go to the concession stand. Behind the stairs on the right side that are kind of hidden are the restrooms. So the new restrooms are going to be underneath there. The large stair on the right is, if you recall, that's really there as an emergency exit stair. It doesn't have to be used day-to-day, but it's there in case of an emergency in the gym. And now we've got large amounts of people in there that we need to exit out. So they can come right out of the gym and come right down those stairs. Instead of just having the stairs exposed, we designed a little sloped canopy over them. So that'll help protect it in weather. We, we're going to save a lot of money by not closing that stair and heating it, basically. So that was one of the compromises in kind of going back and forth with the cost of the project. The same windows you see inside are outside here for the gym itself, up higher with the corner windows. And then kind of a proud extension on the roof, which mimics some of the elements on the existing building. One of the big things that we ran into between the schematic design phase and this design development phase, where we are now in the third phase, is the fact that, as we know, this site is very hilly, all over the place. So as we continue to study it, we, we looked at this many different ways. The original concept drawings had the steam rooms on the same level as the rest of the lower level, which makes sense. You just go from those lower hallways around the team rooms and the fitness rooms, and you walk right into the steam rooms. Makes a lot of sense. But in doing that, we're pushing the toe of the building out like 65 feet into the parking lot that's dropping down like five or six feet. So by the time we got out there, you're up in the middle of like nowhere, and you can't walk out the steam room doors without like really breaking your leg. So as a result of that, we started to look at what are our options? You know, we could lower the steam rooms down, say four feet, but then you're going to end up with a bunch of ramps and stairs and things to connect it in, and ADA access to get from the existing building into the steam rooms. And none of the solutions really worked out well. We didn't like any of those solutions. So what we decided to do was leave it up, so that it's all the same level. Access inside is much easier to bring things in and out of the rooms, and ADA access and so forth. But we had to create a plaza or a base to the addition, basically, which is what you see there now with the concrete wall. So there is going to be a raised plaza around the addition that's going to provide some relief space for queuing for the concession stand, also to get in and out of the steam rooms. If somebody comes down out of cafeteria or gym out of these stairs, they'll have a place to kind of gather. There may be an area at this corner here where you see the G, where people could kind of stand with their, their drinks and food and things before they go back down to the field. So it is going to be a nice base to the building. It's, it's the right solution. It's just something that came out of that design development phase. In addition to that, we've developed some additional plantings. We're looking at some screening walls. You can see there a contrast on the right between the brick and the concrete to hide some of the back-of-house items that are just off of our drawing to the right. There's the generator and the loading dock and things like that, which we don't want to be like right in the face of this new addition. So we're going to work on screening that over on the side. And then just continue to work on lighting. This is sort of a rendering at dusk. So there's the ability to have lighting up under the canopy. There's going to be lighting on the columns, lighting coming from the windows itself. So I think it's going to be a nice setting at night. And then if we want to add district branding and logos to the wall, we can do that, benches. The whole parking lot back here is going to get redone, so this is showing a new crosswalk, a new curb cut right there with, with a sidewalk that runs along. So it's all going to be tied in together, and hopefully it'll be a nice final design. We'll continue to refine this, but again, this is where we are today. Those exterior panels that you see, the gray and the lighter color on the columns, are an exterior finalic panel, which, if you want to see it, it's right here. We use it on buildings all the time. It's extremely durable. Like you can throw this in a bucket of water for like 30 years and it won't even change. And you can also get it in a bunch of different colors. So again, we're showing a gray right now and like a muted beige for the columns, but that, that can be changed. That's not a problem. If, if you want to do different colors, we can bring in different materials and color choices. But the material itself is a good one, and it's economical to build out of. So I can pass these around, or, and that's, that's kind of what we have for our renderings for tonight.
Two questions. We've been talking about a concession stand. Is that not pictured? Is it something that would be up on that one?
It's right in here.
Yeah, so that's, that, where Cindy's pointing right there. That's an overhead, that's an overhead counter door that you could open up during games and events, and you'll have a counter there, and it's inside. It's actually under the gym. And it'll be a small concession stand. They can serve anything out of there for the games.
And then is the parking lot structure where there's two, or two entrances and exits? Like is, I know there's the one existing one. Is there the other one?
Well, that's not part of the design. There is the opportunity in a future project to extend the road around the building, which is, which is a future potential that didn't fit in the budget here. But the idea is that it could be extended around and could potentially have additional parking to up where the old tennis courts were. Or even access to the road all the way through there, which would give you a loop all the way around the building. But that's not in here right now. Just the ability to add it is, is being thought about.
And in the concession stand, it's important to note that there, there won't be a deep fire. There won't be a flat grill. We'll have to continue to have, if we're doing hamburgers and hot dogs, cooked on a grill outside. Unfortunately, once you put any of that stuff in a concession stand, fire code and the expense of sprinkler systems, all those things, it took it out of the possibility of affordability.
Yeah, basically, if you go from warm foods, you know, pizza, popcorn, hot dogs, things like that, that's fine. But if you go to anything, you're, you're like actually, you know, making hamburgers, or you need sinks and you need a grill, it just like triples the cost of the concession stand, because you have to add so many safety features in there. And that's just a Department of Health requirement. So we're going with kind of the scaled back version. But there'll be tons of plugs and things like that for, you know, warming carts and different things. It just won't have like a true cooking area.
Questions from the board?
Just carefully, the, the area behind the trees, is that, is that the cafeteria?
Right here, yeah.
That is.
That's the cafeteria.
Okay. So this, this, this is really the, the section you're talking about is really the, the, the nature of this structure?
This rendering is the, the addition, yeah, which is, it's the only addition on the project. But this is, what, what's not showing is the, the, the high school gym is behind it, which would be existing. And I could foresee people parking back here and coming to either gymnasium through this. There's actually another stairwell that we don't show on the other side, which is enclosed and heated. And that would probably be the way you would come in, if you parked back there, you would come to this gymnasium or the cafeteria. You'd go through about where the arrow is, but it's around the corner. There's an enclosed stairwell that's part of this addition that you would come in and be able to come up through the building in a heated space. That would be your main connection.
Do we still have parking beyond that, in the addition?
Sorry?
Do we still have parking beyond the addition here?
Yes, we are expanding the parking back here, Mike. You know, again, one of the challenges we ran into was, we were hoping to add close to 150 parking spots, but with the slope that was going to require so much fill, we're unable to do the 150 spots. I think we're, the project is 90, 90 to 100 is what we're going to be able to have. And I think there's 60 there now, 66 now.
That was, that was good to hear. We got to a question, which is, range the learner's class, go back there?
Yeah, and that'll all be, that'll all be new as part of the design. We just don't show it off to the left.
Any other questions from the board? Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, we do have Andy from, from Day Automation. You know, we are in conjunction with this project doing our EPC. And so one of the important pieces of that is that we constantly are looking at what cost-saving measures we can put in the EPC that still meets those requirements of a fee that costs a measure over 18 years and what makes sense.
Yep, so I'm Andy Bacardi from Day Automation. I can give a quick update on the EPC or the Energy Performance Contract. Exactly one year ago, the district issued an RFP for an energy project, which Day Automation was the selected ESCO or Energy Service Company, so to move forward and complete what's called a detailed energy audit. We're nearing completion of the detailed energy audit. We've been working very closely with SEI campus, because what we're doing within the buildings, we have to clearly show State Education Department the two separate projects. buildings, we have to clearly show State Education Department the two separate projects. So our project's going to be slightly staggered after submission of the capital project. Ours is going to go in a few weeks after. We needed to make sure that certain spaces like the cafeteria that you saw, those common spaces, that lighting's changing, but it's changing so much that it makes sense that it stays all in the capital project. We relooked at lighting throughout the rest of the building. So everywhere else in the building, we're changing over the current technology to LED. And we're also upgrading the controls. So the detailed energy audit that we had proposed on in the RFP was around a million and a half dollar project based on our initial evaluation of the utility expenditures. Through our detailed energy audit, we actually go in and take measurements on the wattages of light bulbs, the temperatures. So for the last several months, we've been collecting this data. The good news is, was we found additional savings that could fund a slightly larger project than what we initially projected. So with the coordination of the capital project, we've been able to work in some additional scope such as the lighting for the turf fields we're looking at under the performance. As long as it has energy savings, it can be in the energy project. So as we get to the final value of that, we'll come back and present the final, final scope of the Energy Performance Contract. But we're nearing the completion of that and should be able to do so in the next few weeks. That's all for the Energy Performance Contract.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also free to go if you have things to do, and we certainly understand. As I move into my report, I did want to introduce, we have Officer Hopper here who will be helping us out in our SRO role in September and probably most of October.
Yes.
Officer Bredow is furthering her training and so we will have Officer Hopper here to help us in our SRO. So just wanted to...I know most of you know him, but just now is our SRO, so welcome and thank you for helping us out. We look forward to working with you. Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, a little bit about me. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Joe Hopper. I've worked in Genesee for about twenty-two years. I graduated from Genesee OPCS in 2017. And I was a student at Fredonia. I had the opportunity to go to police academy, so I left student at Fredonia. I went to apply to Genesee O. And I was through the police department by Perry Police Department and Trinseep picked me up full-time about a year ago. So I have a total of about two years of long-term experience. I look forward to working with you guys, staff and students.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
And welcome back.
Thank you. Please have a good night.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right, so in my presentation, want to talk about, you know, what everyone is talking about, what will school look like in September? So we did send a thought exchange survey open out to families and staff today. We sent that out John around three o'clock or thirty?
Three thirty.
And within an hour and a half, we had over eighty responses. So the good news is people want us to hear their thoughts. You know, again, still just looking at the initial results, but when you do go onto our website, if you want to fill the survey, please do. But you can also see what others have put in there and you can rate their thoughts. So you know, as you're watching the scope of how people are reacting, it's on our website and we look to see that. We have started our Livingston County DOH weekly meetings again. And actually, we're meeting two times a week. We meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays just to have them update us on positive cases, recommendations. We are utilizing the CDC and the AAP K-12 school opening guidance. We also will be using the NICE guidance as well, which really just summarized both of those opening documents. The administrative team, we did meet and we discussed the guidance. And so the next step for them is to really meet with their team leaders, share the information and discuss concerns. So again, two ways for faculty and staff to share their thoughts through the survey and then again through their team leaders. So what do we know at this point? We do know that instruction will be provided five days a week in person. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, they do recommend universal masking. It's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. Social distancing will be at three feet whenever possible. Barriers will not be utilized. So again, they're saying the barriers weren't an effective mitigation step, so don't use them this year. So again, transportation, masks must be worn on the school transportation. A large difference between the guidance documents that we received this year compared to last year is that there's a lot of shoulds, recommended, where last year it was required must. And so we have a lot more flexibility in our own school to do what we feel is best for our community, our students and our staff. We are allowed to run school transportation at full capacity. Jay did send out transportation forms to families. We received...last time I talked to him, he had about three hundred and fifty forms back and seventy-five percent of the people that did return the forms said that they will be riding district transportation. Athletics and extracurriculars, if you were watching the news at all last Friday, you saw that many news stations, local papers picked up on the fact that fall sports, if we were considered in a substantial or high positivity rate, that they should be either canceled, postponed or held virtually. At this point, everyone in the region is moving forward with their fall sports. If you remember, last year, we had basketball during the highest positivity rate in Monroe County. And the mitigation steps that we put in place, we were lucky that we didn't have any school widespread. We didn't see a large spread within our athletes. So we are moving forward with that piece and I know making our athletes happy. We also know another important part is our extracurriculars. They will also start in September. That's what brings our kids to schools, our extracurriculars and our sports. We need to make sure that we're doing that. So the thought exchange will close at midnight this Thursday. And then with those results, the admin team and I will develop the plans and we will share them out on our website. And you know, if needed, we can offer parent nights. We haven't talked about that piece yet, but if that's something that we need to, we can certainly offer a Zoom or a Zoom app for us. Personnel, we are having...we do have a couple of positions that are still open. Our high school special education teacher position remains open. It seems to be that's a very difficult position to fill. We did have three applicants and before Stephanie could set up interviews, two of those applicants already have jobs. So high school special education teacher is definitely a difficult position to fill and it's not Jim's to do. I mean, if you ask any of the schools in the area, that's one that we are struggling to fill. We also have a long-term substitute in fifth grade position that is open and Kelly will be doing their duties for that position as well. So I want to just acknowledge all the work that Sheri has done this summer with our district calendar is done. It is being printed. Actually, she's going to stop and pick up the first draft tomorrow to proof it one more time. And then we will be mailing it. We are mailing it this year so that every resident is insured to get a copy of our district calendar. And then last week, the business office did complete their audit and you know, the report and the findings are obviously not done yet, but just initially, again, want to thank Ken and Stephanie for their efforts. It was a very positive audit and that doesn't come without a lot of hard work. So thank you to Ken and Stephanie for that. Any questions?
The meeting of Jennifer, is that the chief school officers in Livingston County?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So at this point, outside, they will not be wearing masks. Indoors volleyball, they will most likely be wearing masks.
Was that feeding, you remember that thing?
At this point, no. That may...you know, one of the things that they're saying, you know, as we watch things happening, you know, we see that Monroe County is having, you know, that their rates are steadily increasing. And we're being told we're about two weeks behind that. So we're really monitoring our mitigation strategies on what's happening in the community. So if we need to, we will, we hope to not.
These kids will be wearing masks inside the school regardless of where they are and also in classrooms. Do you limit their appropriate decision?
At this point, that decision has not been made, Kevin. I would say if you look at the results of our survey, what I saw was that our community feels very supportive and that that is how we need to open is good mask in school. So you know, we'll take that feedback and utilize it.
Okay. Thank you. Point zero one, apparently nobody signed up to speak, huh? Okay, okay. All right, so then we'll go right to committee reports. Finance, Mike, can you hear me out there?
Yeah, I can hear you. Nothing bad happened last week, so we need to begin the first meeting.
Great, thank you. Policy, five point zero two, another exciting policy committee meeting tonight. Rivity? Yes, yes, Rivity. I like that. Reviewed a couple of policies. We've got to tweak a couple of them and you'll see it next meeting when we have the first reading coming up. One of the things about the policy, the policies are the law, but from...out of the policies come the administrative procedures. And that's where Cindy and her team come in. And administrative procedures are a lot easier to change than policy changes. So the policy, we try to keep it somewhat general and then it goes to the administrative procedures. And so that's kind of where we're headed. We're also still talking about perhaps using Gary Wan Bosie's again still, or maybe reaching out to school boards for some help in this. As Kevin brought his book, it's about four inches thick and there's got to be a lot of policies in there that we don't need anymore. So that's going to be our assignment for this year.
I can update you on GCF. So they did approve two summer school field trips this summer. One was to Strong Museum and the other one was to the Rock, Clunwall area in town. And just to see the pictures, the students had a blast. And so just really want to thank GCF for continuing to support our programs, our teachers and our students. And just on that note, summer school, I know Kelly did send an email. The teachers, Mr. Hazard, Mr. Pastor, they did a great job this summer. They...there was a lot of work done. The students did work hard, but they made it very fun and a lot of hands-on. So when you walked into the elementary, you heard fun, lively sounds on a regular basis. So I can't remember which student told me, but they said this was the best summer school ever. You know, from the mouths of babes, they had the best time this summer. So I just really want to commend and thank everyone for that hard work this summer.
Mike and I toured the summer school one day and they were having a good time. And the teachers were making it fun. It was obviously, you know, some very unique instructions on learning the alphabet. I mean, I said, no, I could enjoy that. So you know, they were doing a good job. Just a little personal plug for GCF. They're on my list of charitable giving at Christmas time every year. They do a lot of good for the kids in the district and teachers. And I would recommend you think about that for your charitable giving at the end of the year. That's a great group, so anyway.
Is summer school over? Yes. And last...it was for elementary. Last Friday, middle school was Thursday.
So that brings us to personnel.
Yes, I would move a consent agenda, six point zero two through six point zero seven.
Kevin. Discussion on any of those items.
Six point zero five, so much was over?
Yeah, that's how it's running.
Obviously, we need to re-point them.
It's a retro way.
Yes, it's a retro way. It's a retro.
Yeah, there were like, we just saw eight entries today that have substitutes coming that are not here.
That's okay.
There will be two more on section number seven personnel.
No problem. Thanks, Kevin.
We'll note on there that Pam Mercott is retiring. She's been with us a long time and has done a wonderful job for us. So we certainly wish her well and accept her request for retirement with regret. Any other questions on personnel items? Not all in favor? Say aye. Anyone opposed? Thanks, Mike. Okay. Brings us to item seven, new business?
I would move we approve eight.
Did you say six point...yeah, six point oh eight, six point oh nine were not on?
Can I not see them? Yeah, this one went to six.
That was a...
This one went to zero seven there.
Okay.
That's a...
I didn't flip the page.
That's an early copy.
Yep. So I will...I can just read them. I'll amend my motion on to be six point zero two through six point zero nine.
All in favor of amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. That leads us to the...
Thank you. I would move a consent agenda, items six point zero two, or seven point zero two through seven point zero seven.
Second? Second, thank you. Questions on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And Q leads us to the business office, say a eight.
I would move we approve a consent agenda, items eight point zero two. Eight point zero eight.
Second by Kevin. Questions on any of those?
Can...just an explanation on the transfers. It looks like we maybe ran over on...I don't know, I gotta remember what I saw there. Yeah, different salaries.
Yeah, just pulled in some around, some teacher...one big number, there were some teacher fees that were originally in general fund that ended up getting out of, specialized. I'm not sure if those ones...a couple of overtime ones there that are moving from one account within the maintenance department to another.
Okay. Any other questions on those items? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Item nine. I was assuming it was just one. Do you want...Cindy will pick that one up.
Yeah, so we, last year, we had the executive order that allowed us to conduct our board meetings virtually via Zoom. That executive order has ended and so people can't...the community can't participate via Zoom, but it did seem that many of the community members, staff members did appreciate having our meetings videotaped and then on the website that they could then go back and review any time. So it was a good time to have the conversation about... So it was a good time to have the conversation about taking our board meetings, these are public sessions, and then putting the taped version on the website. And we're actually doing it tonight, with you know, Mike is zooming in. Anytime a board member needs to zoom in, like Mike is doing, we have to put the address where he is. And that is actually a public meeting, so there could be a whole bunch of board members at your...or people at the board meeting in that house.
That's a good point. How many people you got there, Mike? That's very true. Very wise.
So you know, I do see the merit in videotaping these meetings. They are public sessions. If people have questions and they're unable to attend the meeting, they can go back. You know, I think one of the things that was difficult was when we were truly zooming and people were participating. I think that felt like at times we were almost at an unfair advantage at times. So if people do want to come and speak, they do have to come in person to do that.
Do you know what other districts are doing? What other districts?
The whole gamut. Some have said, "No, we're not doing any videotaping." Some are live streaming their board meetings out. But again, no participation because it's not allowed.
Everybody okay with that? Videotaping, okay?
Mr. Holt, we'll continue to videotape.
Cindy, just before going to executive session, I would agree with this. And I thank Stephanie from...she did a lot of the audit. Her audit was squeaky clean. And I have like this much of that and she has ninety-nine and forty-four others herself. She was excellent at what she does and fortunate to have her.
And just one quick follow-up reminder from Cindy's note to us on Friday. Howard thought it was really important to have all of us here for the retreat. So we've scheduled it for 6:00 PM on September thirteenth, which is the off Monday night. We'll have refreshments at 6:00 and maybe start at 6:30 or so. And I think in a couple hours, we can wrap it up. We'll do a condensed, a condensed version. And I think it should go well. So with that...
I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss pending litigation, litigation and ongoing negotiations.
Kevin seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.